Yep. So, welcome to the August 4th, 2025, regular meeting of the Lyman Select Board. This is, meeting is public proceeding and is being recorded. And if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And item number one tonight will be a special offer and presentation from the Historical Society about the New York County baseball penny poll at Acton Fair.
Okay. That's going to be the first thing I'm going to talk about. It's that we're sponsoring a penny poll at the Acton Fair this year, August 21st through 24th.
It's a penny poll.
Alright.
So, I'm not sitting here a whole time.
The question is, who was the greatest baseball player from New York County? And was it Jack Coombs from Kennybunk? Was it Harry Lord from Keizer Falls? Was it Fred Parent from Bitterford and then later San? And all three of them were first-class inductees in the main baseball hall of fame. So, we have a display board on each. If you don't carry change or pennies, there will be a bowl of pennies so you can participate. And the polls are open from 10 to 7 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and 10 to 4 on Sunday. Be announcing the winner at 5 o'clock on Sunday afternoon. Now, if you want to do your homework on these three ballplayers, it's going to be feature articles appearing in the Waterboro Reporter the next three weeks. They're going to feature one a week.
Oh, fabulous.
Alright, so you can decide which one you want to vote for. And Michelle's husband, I guess, is going to be stopping by Saturday with Jack Coombs' bat. And she's going to stay how many feet away from the polling place?
That's like 10 miles.
Bat length.
So, we'd like everybody to come. It's going to be a lot of fun. And we'll see which one. It's a very difficult choice. And when you see the display board, you'll see why. These guys had like amazing credentials, so.
What were the dates again? I'm sorry, August?
The 20, August 20, whoa. 21st, 21st through the 24th.
Thank you.
Okay? So.
Do you want another table?
You're going to help me. Can you help me out? I'm going to give you this bat. Do I swing the bat? No, no, carefully. And the stuff that I have that I'm going to show you, because we're going to talk about Bobby Coombs. Just sit where you are, but as the stuff comes down the line,
Ah, from the back.
You can put it in the bag. You don't get to keep it. Last, last week, so I'm here to talk about Bobby Coombs. Bobby Coombs is Jack Coombs' nephew. Bobby Coombs was born right over here on St. John Street. And he also was in the major leagues. And he was in the second main baseball Hall of Fame inductee class in 1970. If you doubt that he was born in Lyman, you can look at this. Because last week, Kim Coombs, his granddaughter, called me up and said, "Will you come take all his stuff? I'm going to give it all to Historical Society." And she gave me a tub of stuff.
That's great.
And she gave me his birth certificate. So, if you have any doubt that he's from Lyman, it's signed by Frank Murphy, who was clerk, your neighbor, who was clerk of court, and he was a selectman. He was a town clerk. And there's his information. So, just pass it down and I'll collect it all and we'll go through. Alright? So, I'm just going to give you a quick rundown on Bobby Coombs. He is obviously a major league baseball player who was from Lyman. He started off at Kennybunk High School, where he played everything and he was really good at everything.
Nice.
And he was so good that in his last major league baseball, his last baseball game at Kennybunk High, he struck out 26 of the 27 people he faced. And they're not sure that anyone else has ever done that. So, you can.
I get to be front of stuff.
Two things. Obviously, you get your name in the globe when you do something.
Thank you.
Okay? So, from there, Bobby Coombs went to Phillips Exeter Academy for four years. From after that, he went to Duke University for four years. And his uncle, Jack Coombs, by then had ended his major league baseball career. And he was the head coach at Duke. And he pitched at Duke. And then from Duke, he got signed by the Philadelphia Athletics. Just, and that was the team that his uncle had pitched for too. And he was there briefly. And things didn't go quite so well for him as they did for his uncle while he was with the Athletics. And so, from there began a very long journey through the minor leagues. At last, you know, I think around nine years or eight years of minor league, trying to get back. And here is a nice photograph of him with the Birmingham Barons in the Southern League. And he has the bat and he signed it.
On that picture, it says there's someone named Cousins in the picture. Is that any relation for cousin school?
Probably related to the team.
That's interesting.
And by the way, Kim did give us his bat. And we've all been enjoying it. We can pass it down.
That's the same bat as in the picture? That's fascinating.
She gave us just some amazing stuff here.
Some top.
So, one of the places he stopped along the way was in St. Paul, Minnesota. He was in Birmingham. And he happened to strike out a young man while he was pitching for St. Paul, who played for Minneapolis in that same league. And his name was Ted.
The picture.
He struck him out. Here's a team picture. And there's a picture on the back of him leaving for spring training with his wife. And this is Kim Coombs' dad, the little boy in the picture.
Thank you.
So, from St. Paul, he ended up going down to the Texas League. He was in the All-Star Game in the Texas League. And finally, after playing in the Texas League All-Star Game, the New York Giants, who later became the San Francisco Giants, called him up and they signed him to a contract. He played a year of minor league baseball with them. And then he made it back to the majors with the New York Giants for a very brief time before he retired. This is a picture of him with the Giants pitching staff. And some of the cool places that he got to pitch, he pitched at Braves Field against the Boston Braves. And he pitched at Ebbets Field against the Brooklyn Dodgers. And it's a very interesting thing of history here on the bottom of this board. It was during World War II. And notice it on the bottom, it's air raid instructions in case there was an attack from World War II. And you can read that on the bottom of the board.
Thank you.
Here is the Boston Braves one.
Thank you.
And tonight is your big chance. If you've ever wanted to hold a major league contract, here's one. This is what a major league baseball contract. She gave us two copies of this.
10 cents, wow, that's, that was a long time ago.
So, after baseball, playing baseball time, he went to Williams College. And he is the longest-tenured coach in Williams College history. He coached baseball there for 28 years. And he got the field, baseball field there is named after him. This is Bobby Coombs Field. And here is his commemorative plaque from having the baseball field named after him. And also, what we found in this tub, which is unbelievable, and by the way, this is Historical Society property, it's not for sale. We found three matchbooks, Bobby Coombs Matchbooks.
Thank you. Lindsay, do you see them?
So, Bobby Coombs spent, after he was done at Williams, he spent his last years in Agunkwe. He lived in Agunkwe and he's buried in Agunkwe. Buried in Agunkwe. And he married a woman from Wyndham early on when he was at Duke University. And there's a funny story. Bobby Coombs' dog was named Bobby Coombs. And he left for spring training and his wife and his son went to Wyndham to be with his parents and because he had to go to school. And when school got out, then they would go and be with it. The boy would go and the wife would go and be with him. And apparently Bobby Coombs was not used to being in Wyndham because he's from Agunkwe. Bobby Coombs, the dog, got lost. And they put a notice in the Portland Press Herald that Bobby Coombs was missing. "Please return Bobby Coombs if you find him." But that was an interesting tidbit we had, we found in this tub stuff. So, we are in the process of archiving all of this. And we're going to talk about this at our next meeting. So, we'll figure out how we're going to make this stuff available. Definitely something for the town to be proud of. And something to show to everybody.
That's amazing. Can't wait for the new building. That could all be like.
I was going to say, we need dedicated space for this. And that's exciting.
Yeah.
Have a home for this, so.
Spring training, that could be up during.
Come in and see it and.
It'd be great for like little league teams and the teams here in Lyman to come in and take a look and realize that, you know, we had a major league baseball player from Lyman.
Right.
And the other thing I'll mention real quick, I don't want to take up too much time because I know you have a meeting. But if you want to see the main baseball Hall of Fame and you go to Seadog's teams in Portland, go to the, underneath the stands, first base concourse. And there's a concession stand. Across from the concession stand, there's a door and it says "The Portland Room." Door is always unlocked. Just don't be shy, go right in. And the whole right-hand wall is the main baseball Hall of Fame. And you will see his gold plaque up on the wall being in the main baseball hall of fame, along with his uncle, Jack, and with Harry Lord, and with Freddie Parent.
Love that.
Hope to see you guys all at the, everyone come out to the Acton Fair.
I take it you're a baseball fan as well?
Well, I am. I, I, you know, and it's interesting to read about the old, you know, old players and during that whole period of time, the very, very beginning. Which is when Freddie Parent was, was, he played in the first World Series. So, he was right at the very beginning.
And my, my salaries have changed. 3,500, yeah.
Second thoughts about signing that contract.
Yeah.
I was like, nah, maybe not so much.
Pretty awesome. Sure that was good money in the 40s up there.
Yeah. That's a, that was like a house or a car or something. In the 30s, right?
33.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Dave.
Appreciate it.
I like your glasses, Dave.
Thank you. I brought them in the bag.
Item number two is public input. Publics in attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. Please use the podium and to address the board and please be respectful of others. The board may not be able to respond to Q and A during public comment. If you wish to be placed on a future agenda, please contact the town manager. And item B, do we have any, we do have, we do have an item.
This is something you guys are already addressing, but I'll just go over a little bit of what I seen. At Kennybunk Pond Beach being closed, a lot of people were like, couldn't see the sign that was just tagged on the, on the piazza. But now there's one on the parking gate as well. So, just as a thought process, there's still people swimming down there. And like, it was even loaded with people. Today, we went to, we wanted to go into Bunginut on Saturday with, no, Sunday with my family. And my son had a play date there. So, we were there the other day, but on the way out, you could see the beach was full. And the kids are in there, you're thinking, oh my gosh. And I understand they're going to do what they're going to do, but, you know, maybe put in the gate up and then on, when you have the work, closing it down so people can't go in. I mean, people are just not always maybe savvy about equalizing, like, can I link to you? Which is kind of scary. But, you know, it isn't going to happen anywhere. Even at Bunginut, I have a family sitting in front of me, child. And she had her husband washing his shorts right out in the lake as well. So, I'm going to, I'm just like, oh my god. So, I don't know what can be done about that stuff either. If, you know, if there's managing, I was just saying, they're like, you gotta be kidding me. You know, unfortunately, people don't have manners or maybe just seeing if you fly, like, hey, you're not looking back. This is the kind of behavior you're going to do, washing dirty, soiled, being in the suit. And then right where everyone's swimming, it wasn't like they went out to the side. And it was packed there. And one more thing, I don't know, and this is, they wanted to contact you, Lindsay. When the pines is reserved, isn't it just down the way end? And I was going to ask, because they have the sign starting at the bridge way up by the beach. So, there were so many people looking for it to get out of the sun. And there, I know there's supposed to be picnic benches that people can use in that first part. And then it becomes reserved down where that big grill is, down towards the end is my understanding when the road comes in. I don't know if they get the whole pines, but I always thought that part of it still was open to the public. But they had it kind of, the Y had a sign there saying, "No going down there." When we went there, people were like dying, there was no shade to be had. And I will tell you, out of the 100 people there, every person I heard complained about the chips. Just say, one lady came, "Hey, who did this?" And because she's from around here, she said, "Why would they do this?" So, there was a lot of ooch and och and, and what are they going to do about this? As we sat there and I, it was just interesting to observe. So, just reporting about what we saw was over there. And there was also a line for the changing room. That was pretty interesting for somebody to see that. People were just waiting because we only had one.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Guess not. Oh. Item B is ma'am. Which there's none. So, we'll move on to unfinished business. Any updates on the franchise agreement?
Yes, so since the last board meeting, Tony is part of the Main Community Media Association, the MCMA nonprofit. And they consolidated everything and sent it to the state board, which is the MCA, Main Connectivity Authority. I have to write it down because I can never remember. And now we're back to waiting again to see what the board says and if it's a back and forth thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Did they, they sent the new model franchise agreement? Have you, is that what they're reviewing?
Well, there was the consolidation and all the texts they combined into one. And now the authority has to approve or deny it, line by line. So, who knows how long that will take?
Okay.
Anything else on the, Dave? Okay, well, we will move on to the town hall backup generator. We have one. I think one, one for this and two for that. I always have a big fear of lacerating myself when I do that. This is from Ed Profeno Jr. from Gorham, Maine. In the, the generator, 200 amp transfer switch, concrete platform, 120 feet of cable, one wet cell battery, the permit and the labor is $17,000. It was here in plenty of time. And that is the specs. Start this way or this way? What do you want me to do?
Doesn't matter.
Don't see it? Now you see it?
Is it just one?
There was just one, yeah.
So, noob question, what happens when there's only one? It's okay?
It's okay.
It's a bid.
I didn't know you had to have like minimum two or something. The preferred, not versus required.
Three quotes if it's over 5,000. And if it's over 10,000, you just do the bidding process. There's no specifics on how much. But even when we try to get quotes sometimes, like, we could reach out to 10 people and only one responds.
Right.
Since we tried.
Thanks.
Great.
And they did speak to another, I don't remember the company. Someone did reach out and ask, I think it was Durfee Generators. But then they didn't want to submit a bid, so. So, there was another vendor, but they didn't want to do it.
I don't, I don't know where we go from here with just one, I mean.
Let's compare it to.
Yeah, I know, a couple questions. I believe for the $3,000 in grant money that can go to this. My apologies, I can't recall how much we budgeted for the generator.
15.
15?
Right? Yeah.
So, we got that and then some.
Has the number been announced? Did anybody say the number?
Yeah.
I did.
Then my, my, my thought is, as, as I've stated in the, in the past, once you mention that number, it's not fair to that contractor to now rebid it against other people. Not your fault, it's just, you know, it's a good question, what do we do now? But once, once the cat's out of the bag.
The grant has a timeline also, so we won't really be able to rebid it.
We will not be able to rebid it?
Well, if you want to use the grant funds towards it.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, we're going to sell the other generator, so that'll help with the cost.
As much as I can see, it looks like the, this, the bid covers the requirements of the, of, I don't, I don't know this person, I've never heard the name. I don't really know anything about him. So, it's, it's not that I have to.
So, he does a lot of work for the town.
Does he already?
A lot of smaller stuff that, yeah. These are usually, everybody thinks of him as our electrician. He's not like our electrician, but he does a lot of the odd jobs around here. So, like, he shut off the power when somebody ran over the gate on Saturday.
Oh, that was him?
Yeah.
He is absolutely competent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. I, I was going to ask you if you have any.
Alright.
Input there. We got one. We asked for one, we got one. What's, what's your wishes?
Well, we have familiarity with the bidder. It's within the range of what we had in mind. Dave says he's quite competent in his work, so. Shall we move to accept?
Is there a motion?
It is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No more discussion?
Do we have to sell the other one? We don't have to. It was recommended by your electrical inspector. Would it not, like, would it not be something that we could use at the transfer station? Like if, you know, we ever needed backup power there or, I don't know if it's something that, like, you know, around town if something happened.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I can look into that and ask the transfer station manager if he feels like that would be beneficial. We would have an issue with storing it if we decided to keep it. So, if we just wanted to hang on to it, we don't really have a place to put it. We don't really like to store things in the garage at the transfer station because they have to put their equipment in there. Or just thinking of, it has a value somewhere.
There is a value in it. It still works correctly for the size of which it was trying to cover. But of anything, there will be expense to it if we were going to use it somewhere. It's not a portable generator. So, it would need the transfer switch and the wiring and, and all of that stuff.
And you'd have to make sure, like, it doesn't work here because it doesn't power the whole building, which is why we're upgrading. I don't know if it would power everything we need at the transfer station. I mean, we can look into it, but there's a lot of mysteries. Just a thought. Yeah.
Is there any more discussion?
I was just wondering, might Marcelle know of anyone who'd be interested in purchasing the old generator?
I, it wouldn't take much to, especially at the turn, turn of the year. You, you put that out on a blast, you'll get somebody to buy it.
Yeah, we put it out to bid, just like we have done with other things we've sold.
Especially people with camps.
We just had our home generator put in the whole house and that price is pretty good for the automatic switch over. I don't know about, I don't know about commercial, I just know from my house.
15 KW or something. 15 might be an 18 KW.
Yeah, I'm just saying the, the price wise, it seems pretty good for all of this.
This one's 22 kilo.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Fellows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay, one abstention and four positives. It's, it's carried. I'm going to put this all back in here. Maybe? Maybe I'll put it back in here.
No paper cuts.
Hi, guys.
Jim's back, how's the night?
There you go.
How you guys doing?
We were waiting on you.
Nice.
We're, um, we want to do the, the next item of business is the Bunginut Park combination improvement project. And we have two of those. One on? So, what is it, you do cut it or you just rip it off? It's childproof now.
What's your Christmas present?
Oh, there, look at that. Closed our two options for picnic tables. At least there's another letter, said, eh, I didn't want to do that. Remember, we got one of those, thought it was a bid.
Metal. Square. Metal rectangle. Metal round.
The grant amount for this one was 21.
22, so that one.
Yeah.
It's for nine picnic tables. The specific items come up composite material wheelchair accessible picnic tables to be delivered to Bunginut Park.
What's the other company? What are the companies? Who submitted the bid?
Uline?
Uline is one, and the other one is Lowry's. Lowry submitted two options.
So, the RFP.
Yep.
Is it, is it for all four of these right here? All the different ones? So, we add all these up?
I think they, Uline's the only one that got called me and they were giving different. I think they, Uline's the only one that called me and they were giving different.
Yeah, got a line of that kind of. Yeah. Sorry.
Well, Uline had called me, so they were giving different options.
Yep.
If you want a square or rectangle, it's up to you guys.
Is there a timeline for that, this grant as well?
Uh, it has to be completed by the sixteenth, I think, of December.
Yep. Installed? Or for the grant funding, use the grant.
Then there's a follow-up.
It says it's two options, but I'm, I'm not.
And that's it.
I'm trying to find option number two. This one's clearly marked option number one, but it, it's all, all together. This is, um,
So they sent four different kinds, they sent the recycled plastic, and then they sent metal square, metal rectangle, and metal round.
I think, I think this is a lot to sit here and absorb right at the moment. We don't have to award this today, could we table this, we could all come in here, we'll keep these here. We can all come in and review them on our own time and put it back on the agenda for the next meeting, would that work?
How's the timeframe?
Yeah.
No, we're still good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I hate to do that, in a sense, but I'm, I just.
Well, it's not really for this year, I would imagine, anyway, I mean, it's, it's gonna be the end of the season, so.
As long as the sample goes with it. And this goes with it, I just wanted to keep all this stuff together. So if you'd like to look at that one.
Oh, I bet these are your options, Vicki, option one and options, I bet those.
Yeah, the two colors.
Two colors, not.
I think gray was preferred in terms of, uh, retaining heat. Not showing dirt.
Well, yeah, these are all, because when I, when I went to get the information at the beginning of this,
Yep.
I was shocked at how, how the furniture is made, number one, there's different kinds, different, different weights, different thicknesses, different styles, uh, different ways they're screwed and bolted together. And there's so much to it, like, there's some, definitely some ones that I don't think would handle all kinds of traffic, all different people on it. And that, so it's, you really gotta look, see what you're looking at.
Looking for durability.
Does it all also include them bringing them out there? Because they really carry.
Yes, deliveries.
They'll pick up or anything like that.
Is that the rest of this one?
Nope, that's, no, it says it right there, okay.
Cause it, oh. There it is.
That's comparable, and the other one, I think, had ADA also.
Yeah, but it had a space, which where they, yeah.
Do you, do you want to table this, or, or do we want to do it now?
No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm asking, I, we didn't vote on it or anything, it's not, it isn't a motion.
Apples to apples, you're talking, you know, rectangle with, you know, protruded top for the, um, for wheelchair.
Yeah.
Um, the other one has an open space, it's round, but it's, it's both a poly resin plastic, you know, so, so they're fairly comparable. Um, I mean, this one here is seventeen thousand, what was the other one?
Well, all the different, there was different options.
Yeah, but it was metal, I'm saying apples to apples.
So, this, this hex one? Eleven, ten?
Yeah, this is the one, this is apples to apples, yeah.
I can think, I mean, for me personally, I would be like, metal would be out because metal is hot in the summer, who's gonna want to sit on that?
It's gonna rust.
And it's gonna rust, and this one does.
This one is more comparable to the, that one.
Yeah, same material.
But, you know, again, you're right, let's table it because this seats more than that.
Well.
More people.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't.
So there's a few questions.
So, um, anybody want to make that a motion?
So I'm making a motion to move it to next meeting, which gives us time to come in and review all the paperwork.
Second.
Written bids.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So no one's opposed because it's unanimous. That's the Lowry one, I just don't want to mix these up.
And when we swing on by to take a look, should we go to you, Lindsay, or, okay?
We'll put it in the office. If I can get this back in the envelope, we'll be doing something. That's the inline. Yours is so neat.
Next time I'll just open them and then.
Oh, that, that works for me. Oh shoot, there's the rest of that one, okay, I'll be alright in a minute.
Oh, that's option two.
Yeah. I didn't see that either until this now, so.
Sorry, now I'm.
Put those in this one.
So, it's up to you guys, you want to do this, but Restic Dreams is here for their application.
Can I, can I make a motion to take item five A out of order?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll be, uh, in new business, item five under Restic Dreams.
I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, I read through it. The building inspector gave it a clean bill of health. So with that said, I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick one in terms of, uh, no necessity for a public hearing because this is a renewal and, uh, there's no requirement for a public hearing, it's, uh, as state law says, may, may hold one. So my understanding is, is that correct? There's no necessity for a public hearing?
So you have two things, you have a liquor license, application renewal, and a special amusement permit. Uh, I know the liquor license says may, um, and given if they've had any complaints, which they haven't had any complaints.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seems unanimous, no one's opposed.
Have you guys filed online the liquor license one, because I guess it's all online now? Okay.
Um, I will mail, I didn't though, it was like, um, I just ended up mailing that in to say like I always have with my chat, I just made you guys with the approval.
Yeah, so I did email you guys, I forwarded what they sent me, they told me that everything's online, so normally we would mail stuff in, but I guess they changed it.
Now they just want me to like that.
I mean, you still go through the approval process the same way, but everything's through their portal, so.
Okay.
Just so you know, so it doesn't delay your application.
Yep, thank you.
Some sort of program called B E L L S, bells, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
At least you don't have to worry about the mail, if the mail got there or not.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for running a stellar business. Take care.
You too.
So we'll go back to unfinished business and the discussion, Kenny Monpon Beach Gate damages repairs tabled from last meeting. Is there any, is it any new information?
No, so I just am looking for you guys to know what do you want to do with the gate, so we're only gonna get, you know, so much money back to replace it, so it's up to you what you want to do, if you want to replace it, that's what we'll pursue, if you want to leave the loan. Uh, if you want to go, I know Joe had sent some pictures of other types of gates, which is fine. Um, if you do go with something and it comes in a lot higher than what we get reimbursed, then you'll have to figure out budgeting and stuff for that.
Cool.
Any, any idea of the legal consequence to the person?
The insurance company will deal with all of that, we don't deal with any of it. So basically, they reimburse us the money we lost, you know, the loss. Um, and then they go after the person to get their money back, we're out of the loop at that point.
So, do we sign, uh, basically, that's it, we, the town can't go after that person for the remainder of the, uh, amount, uh, bill?
Or the deductible?
Well, I know it, it may seem petty, but if you do that, I'd rather spend two thousand dollars to get a thousand dollars back. That will send a message to the people that are doing the damage, that we're gonna come after them. I'm just curious if that's legal.
I don't know, I think the message is gonna get sent, though. Like, I think they're gonna be in for, this is gonna be pricey, they're gonna owe the insurance company a lot of money, it's gonna be thousands of dollars, like tens of thousands of dollars. And the sheriff reported, he wasn't sure if they had vehicle insurance. So that means they're gonna file an SR twenty-two for three years, I mean, I don't know, I, I'm not into the witch hunting, I'm.
Well, the witch hunt is over, if we actually have a person, that's not a witch hunt. That's all I'm saying.
What do you guys want to do with the gate, that's why this is on the agenda. So when the insurance gives us some money, what am I doing with that?
Well, you know, I, I'm the one that brought up the cantilever gate last time. And I think it was where it came from for me, that was to change it, to make people have to stay out. Uh, I know we had problems with this gate and stuff, but that is what we had. And something that Dave said actually caused me to take a little pause and, uh, and think about it a little, and he said we haven't even really given it a chance. And so, that's what got destroyed. I'm thinking more along lines of replacing that, get it replaced. It was there anyway, and if somebody wouldn't run it over with their car, it would still be there.
I'd just be curious as to what the price tag on one of these cantilevered, uh, fences would be, I know I would expect it to be rather, uh, significant. But, uh, I think it, just by appearance and functionality, is more formidable than what we've had. And I know Dave, you mentioned before that no matter what you put out there, you know, there's the temptation to bust it. But again, something that, uh, is stronger, uh, again, uh, I think more of a statement in terms of keep out might be the way to go. I'd like to see what the price tag would be.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a bad idea. Um, because we're gonna be doing budget cycle too, so it'd be worth it to kind of look into that. I'd also, you know, suggest maybe when we get into budgets, is maybe looking into a pay gate and looking back into doing, uh, Liman residents are free and other people pay. And I know a lot of people think that you can't do that because of the inland fisheries and the pond stocked, but I have looked into inland fisheries, you can't charge people a fee to fish, but you can charge a fee to park. So people, we're, if we're just blocking off the parking area, someone could still come in and put their boat in and go park their truck at the school or somewhere else, or wherever they decide to do with their truck. So the boat launch would be accessible, you know, the beach, the water is accessible, the parking lot isn't. Um, and I say that because people still complain of all the noise and the partying. Uh, with or without the gate, there are people living in the park at night, even when the gate's up. Um, so, and it seems to me that the vandalism and stuff that occurs, that is not Liman residents, it's people from out of town. So maybe it's time to consider, um, putting a price tag on it just to help deter that type of activity, I don't, you know, we tried to beautify it and people are still going in and.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, in a perfect world, thing worked perfectly. It would have done exactly what we needed it to do, if people were still in there after hours and the gates were closed, that's obvious trespassing. But, I mean, I don't know, I really don't know what the answers are, and, uh, you know.
And I'm not saying do a pay gate now, because I think, I think we're gonna have a finite amount of money and, you know, anything bigger than that, we're gonna have to budget anyways, so, and figure out logistics.
If we replace and repair what we have and try to get it to work better, that would might be a direction, that would probably be the least expensive direction right now?
Is there a roundabout dollar figure with that?
I think we need to get pricing on how much we're gonna get versus what it would cost to bring it back to its original. And I want to have the conversation again to, uh, actually proceed to collect from the individual who actually did that, as long as it's legal.
I mean, that I have to look into, but I will say the officer did not charge with destruction of property, he's only charging, uh, failure to report because they confessed to it. So I don't know if it's.
Sounds like it's over the chunk case today.
Did anyone see that, um, Joe reached out to York County just to get some past crime data, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it. I don't know if using, if we're gonna delay this decision to talk about it more, we could use those addresses that you gave and reach out again, so, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna try it again since we're not making a decision today.
I did want to point out.
This didn't really add any value, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay, I mean, it, it does tell you the road. Um, it doesn't give you a lot of perspective on that specific area, but I did want to clarify that in case people look at the packet.
We can work on, when I say we, I mean Joe, can we?
Okay. Is there anything else, do you, do you have anything to add?
I just, I just think that repairing it right now, that seems to me like if, it seems like we're just wasting that money, like, let's get the insurance money, let's save it, let's see what we're gonna need to switch it to a pay gate, I, I fully believe that it needs to be a pay gate there. I think that will deter people from going in, like, they're, they're not gonna go in and pay and then, well, I would hope, destroy stuff. Um, but I think it's also going to, like, having Liman residents, having a card that they can get in for free, and if you're not a Liman resident, you have to pay, it doesn't hurt anyone in the town. You know, we're, we're still able to, to go down and use it for free. There might actually be space for us if we wanted to go down and use it. Um, you know, so, that's just my thoughts, I think, seeing what the, the gate that Joe sent the picture of, my only concern with that one is is it gonna be a gate that somebody has to go down and open and close it?
That's.
Because I know that it was brought up, oh, there's five of us up here, but it's like, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not fit to go down and shut a gate by myself at nine o'clock at night.
I know that the ones that are fairly, a lot like that, that go on a, that roll, and you go to like certain, um, storage places, and if you want to get into your unit, you have to punch the code on the keypad and it, and it beeps and it opens most of the time, sometimes it even lets you back out.
So then everybody would have to have a code?
Or a card.
Or a card, something like that. But also, you, you, with one of those, that's quite a big production because they're heavy, so there would also be a lot of site work involved because that's not flat and straight and, you know, you just go plunk it down, there's gonna be a whole lot more.
And I think you gotta consider like drifting and snow and, and stuff.
Yeah, it comes off the pond.
Yeah, that, that would. I can imagine, I didn't even think of that, but that is where it blows right to there, I mean, we have to go plow that several times when it's really windy, when it snows, so. That's another point.
Well, I mean, I don't know when I'll get the information from the insurance company as far as, you know, um, and I've, I've been checking in with them, so I'll just keep checking in with them to figure out, you know, what, what we're eligible for reimbursement. Um, I want to say it's around eighteen thousand, I think that's what it's covered under, so I'll just check in with them and then.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that's, I think that's where we should steer towards, and then if we get paid, that, we can still, if we use it for a gate, does it have to be that gate in time, or, I mean, is this something we have to decide immediately to get paid and to replace it? And it's the same thing that we have now. Because any upgrades we would make to make that a pay gate would be on us.
Or I think Dave brought up possibly adding more cameras.
I think more cameras is a must. But I, I, again, we should just. But I, I, again, we should just table it until we get that answer. We can, we can talk to the existing gate company, find out what that's gonna cost, find out what a cantilever gate is gonna cost, see, see what's involved. And then-
I don't disagree.
Decide whether or not-
So it'll be an ongoing unfinished business?
I don't mean to burp for long, but the point that you're making, Dave, I agree. And I think it would have a deterrent effect if we went in after the individual who admitted responsibility. And I see your point, maybe spending two grand to get one grand back.
It's an investment.
But at the same time, just to consider, what's the likelihood of getting that grand back? If this person's already, is gonna be docked with tens of thousands of dollars as a liability already.
It's not my job to worry about somebody's financial status.
So, I have something to Joe's point, though. You have to consider your administrative costs as well. So there's my time and resources that go into getting that $1,000, and if you exceed it, then it really is not worth it. But another point I want to make before you jump in, we already have other vandalism on the docket that we're pursuing. And to Joe's point, that person is like, oh, I'm not paying for it. So the likelihood of you getting the $1,000 back is, you're gonna be spending more money in administrative costs, trying to recover.
You made your point. I, it may not be $1,000, okay? We don't know if we can get that same gate fixed at the price that, that we paid for it already. So it's an unknown number, so let's table it.
Yeah, I have an agreement with that.
Need a motion to the table?
Do we?
I'd make a motion to the table until we have more information in regards to the insurance company.
Second.
Any more discussion? Those in favor of tabling it? Aye. Is there anyone opposed? All righty, Fire Commission, Fire Chief Report. I did send you a copy of July's, just to show you what's up. I know when the chief is back from his trip, he was gonna do better to start incorporating those reports, like the former chief did. And he is still away, so our next commission meeting is not on Thursday. It is next Thursday on the 14th at 5:15 at the fire station.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, one thing that caught my eye was the incident on the 17th of last month. And I was wondering, was there a lack of certain types of equipment that mitigated the response to that incident? If you could ask the chief about that, I'd appreciate it. That was a situation, I think it was out past the Liman Elementary. They were having some issues, from what I understand, by getting out to the person who is in distress.
Who was a couple miles in or something?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah. I do acknowledge that in the trails around here, people lock it off to prevent trespassing on their own property. But if it was a matter of the equipment that the fire department had not being up to that particular task, maybe something we could look into and look for, or grant money for.
We'll find out, but it's also, I can find out at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything? Do we have the treasurer report? The expense report? Anybody have any comments or questions on that?
I take it the one that was stamped 1047 was 26 FY26?
I have them in front of me. One does say FY25, though, I thought. Yeah, one is urine.
All righty, is there any comments or questions on that? All right, C Ego Maine Rep, Amber Swett, food waste diversion program updates.
So, we've received the contract from the state. So we're able to move forward with our food waste diversion program. We're gonna receive $22,261 to get the program up and running. Lindsay submitted our DEP permit application last Friday on August 2nd, so we'll have a little time before that. New transfer station license comes in, and then we can start doing some work up there. So we can start ordering the stuff that we're gonna need. We just can't do any work at the transfer station until the license is updated. And EcoMaine had joined Parks and Rec at their first concert in the park and did some tabling to support the program. They passed out some countertop buckets, as well as some other goodies. And they gathered some emails, which I have. And I will be reaching out to all of them as soon as I get the new email set up. So one of the educators that had come to the concert in the park, Abby Hart, had been to the transfer station earlier that day. And she's been doing kind of like a spotlight on different towns that EcoMaine contracts with owner communities and all that. So she did Liman that day, and she's gonna compile a video of that. And I had gone in on Monday and did an interview with her about the food waste program. And I did put the questions that she asked me, and it was my fault I sent it, the answers, my responses to Lindsay in a separate email. So I didn't get them printed, but if anybody wants to know what I said, they can reach out to me. And the new email address is liman.ecome rep@lyman-main.gov. So anyone can use that if they have questions about EcoMaine, recycling, suggestions, concerns, questions, they can reach me there. And I'm super excited, getting closer to this becoming a reality. And I am excited about measuring, like weighing how much everybody does. Yeah, because if we, well, let's just say, just for my own amusement, what did we spend last year on municipal solid waste? So we spent $156,000. 156 or 83, 86. So if 40% of food waste is going in the trash, we can take that out. We could save $62,593. So I hope that people are excited and want to come out and join in all of the craziness.
Hope so, too.
Yeah, that's real money that we are literally throwing away.
Literally, yeah.
So I'll be on the lookout for volunteers to help at the food waste up there. And if anybody wants to volunteer, they can reach out and let me know. And that's it.
Nothing else? Thank you. We'll move on back to new business. Town Line Restaurant Renewal Application for Liquor License.
Can I ask a question? Why do these look totally different? Ones of Liman and this-
So they did theirs on the Bablo, the online portal.
Okay.
And Rusty Dreams didn't realize there was an online portal.
I make a motion to renew the application for Town Line Restaurant's liquor license.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous, so nobody's opposed. Motion carries. Discussion from last meeting regarding Select Board Quarterly Newsletter. Will everybody talk at once?
I love this idea. I think a quarterly start out is fantastic, because, you know, depending on who's going to take it over, and I'm willing to help with that. I have so many ideas to put on this. Michelle, this is a great idea.
Yeah, I can, I have all the files on my computer. I can, I'll do mine for you.
But it's community involvement to get input, like the librarian could give us a book of the month, you know, maybe in an age bracket or, I don't know. RSU spotlights, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could there be a system where library, the chairs of the various committees could have input into what's coming up? And it would be reflected in this, not just in the hard copy, but could also be posted on the town website as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it'd be great to, I think we should, you know, you want to spread it across as many platforms as you can, you know, to reach people.
I think it's a great idea to reach people as well, but my concern, my deep concern is what information is going to be shared and who decides what information is shared? And how do we keep it all in line with the town, what the town is doing, what, how we do business, policy-wise? Like, if we, who, who are we gonna tax to do this? And who's the final say in what gets said and what gets printed in this newsletter that's one time a year?
Yeah, I think it should be vetted, and I don't mind vetting it. I mean, I don't have the, you know, I'd love to do a newsletter. I just don't have the time to like compile one consistently. So if someone was willing to like collect the information and put it in there, you know, I typically like when committees send in reports to the Select Board, not that I've ever found anything really horrible, but I look at those reports, and if I saw something that I was like, nah, that's questionable, you know, I might go back to the committee and ask them to redo it or give them suggestions, so.
Because I wouldn't want, I mean, you know, sometimes unintentionally, might give away some information that might be confidential even.
Right.
You know?
I think it, it shouldn't be personal, like, it should just be community-based, informational, educational. It shouldn't be, I wouldn't put like a person in the spotlight.
It should definitely have some, some rules and oversight.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that looks like. I'm not trying to like be the Debbie Downer. I just, I see a whole lot that could potentially not be good.
I'm not putting this on you, but I know you're the social media person, so I'd be happy to try writing one of these. But I don't know if how people are gonna feel. Oh, a board member writes it, and the other side of our government. I, I think let's just try it, see where we go. We'll write one up, see what you think, and we can discuss it from there.
Yeah, I mean, basically, like, before anybody can post anything on the website anyways, it has to be approved. So I'm gonna be vetting it. I, I think I would totally appreciate it if KJ wants to take the time to try it and do a pilot program.
Big wink. Yes. Yeah, I'd love to.
But I totally hear the concern, too. Like, I'm, I agree with you on that.
I just, yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, let's, let's come up with one. Pick a, like, a month from now, whatever. I can try to reach out and see if I can get a little bit from everybody. Try to put one together, see what town manager thinks, and then we'll see if that's something that we're even interested in. I don't have anything for us to go by to say, yeah, we like that or not, so let's go from there.
Should we keep it on the agenda for unfinished business then?
But to give me one month.
On the first, the first meeting of September?
Sounds good.
Is that enough time?
And that's just to see what responses I get and go from there, so.
Yeah.
So everybody's okay if I reach out to the committees to get little blurbs?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll CC you on everything.
Speaking of any other, I mean, Michelle took some good ideas in there, just like community stuff, if there, you know, concerts in the parks is going on, or, you know. I know the Go Mill Cemetery was gonna do like a haunting grave tour thing. It would be really cool to put stuff like that in there.
And they're doing that craft thing also in October is coming up, so, yep, I can get, just to get started.
Is there any more discussion on that?
I think that's great.
We're good? We'll move along. Amber Swett, discussion regarding Select Board Liaisons for Committees.
Yes, so I have listened to Lindsay ask for us to be more involved in the committees, since we're the ones that actually oversee them. And so I took liberty to make this up and just thought we could discuss how we could split the committees up and start either, if we can attend their meetings or watch their meetings, and just, just be more involved in the committees that we're, that we're watching.
I started attending the planning board meetings because of that. And I missed the one on the 16th because it was our anniversary, so I didn't go.
Well, and Amber had put Planning Board and ZBIA on there, and I had suggested not doing, I mean, you can go to the meetings. I think that's great. I just suggested being really careful not to interfere with those boards, because they are by law an ordinance. They have to make decisions, so you wouldn't want to like bias.
I didn't say order, I just said that, I didn't-
But yeah, it'd be helpful to like pay attention, even attend the meetings and-
Or even just watching the videos, that's why I do it.
So, yeah, I don't know how you guys feel about that. Maybe one, one take a committee and two or six.
And not, there's nine committees and five of us, so.
Three or four.
Yeah.
Considering that you're going to comprehensive and ordinance review today.
So that's two out. I'm going to say no to the IT committee, because I live with them, and that's- Get us out of trouble.
I would love to take the Recycling and Waste Committee.
Well, there isn't one right now, just the FYI.
I will, I will work on that.
And I think that's a good end for, you know, getting off the ground with the composting and whatnot.
Yeah.
I'd be happy with Parks and Recs.
Okay, I'm done volunteering for today. And I would be willing to take the Cemetery Committee on, too. Because I would like to help them with fundraising if they ever get to that point. So if nobody has any problem with that.
Age-friendly?
Well, you might want to see after item five F for that one. What is the Buildings and Ground Committee?
There are two people, Rusty and Tom.
I guess that would be a great way to get involved, find out what's happening. Conservation and Forest Committee, none appointed.
Is there any one on that committee?
No, it's not.
No, there isn't.
No, Leo, I think Leo Rule was the only one on it for years, that we kept it on there.
It's moot.
So if recycling ever gets a committee, wouldn't mind as well? Just because I want to be a part of that personally.
Oh, I will work on recruiting.
I'll be, I'll just be at that committee.
So what does that leave us?
IT, conservation, but there's nothing, no, not one yet, and Buildings and Grounds.
I'll take Buildings and Grounds.
So IT.
I'm not. You're kidding me. You're gonna stick in my eye. I'm sorry, but I don't do, I don't get along with that.
I mean, I can take it, but would that be weird, because it's my husband, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a little bit of a conflict.
And, and maybe, I don't know.
Think of how much work you could get done, though.
I think so-
After you finish the dishes and laundry.
I mean, for me, so like Amber had kind of promised, is I'd ask the board to kind of help with, you know, you guys appoint committees. So I am eager to help out with them, like I help out with CPC quite a bit, you know. If they're willing to accept my help, sometimes they're not always willing to accept it. And then I think when things come up, some, you know, Amber's asked questions or people have asked questions, well, what about this one, this one? It's like, invite them to your meeting and ask them, because I am supervising the employees. And I feel like you guys should help supervise the committees. However, However, I am here a lot, so I think I, I can help out committees when they're willing to accept it. So I do help them out. Um, I just can't, you know.
So that, that concerns me, like I, I, I don't think that we should be allowing committees to not work with the town manager. I think if we have a committee that is out there and they are just, they're not following through, they're not submitting their reports through the town manager, they're not, you know, they're trying to keep the town manager out of the loop, to me, that's a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that if that's, if we recognize that in the committee, then that committee should be called in.
Right.
And.
So like I haven't had any issues lately, but like if, if you wanted them to do a quarterly report, like I'm, you know, I'm not going to check in on them or if I send them an email and they don't respond to me, like I'm not going to chase them. So it would be really helpful if you guys are kind of paying attention and you're aware like, hey, we haven't heard from anybody. You know, their project statement says this or, I don't know, I'm just trying to make it like a collaborative effort so that I'm not, you know, monopolizing the employees and, and the committees. If that makes sense.
Yep. Do, so you're saying if we want to require that, it's not required for quarterly or? Uh, we've. It's just if someone shows up type of thing?
That's the way it's been, like if they present one. So, you know, some committees present them, some, some of them don't. Um, when we did the project statements, like the cemetery committee, I think I put it in there annually only because they're really, they're honestly, they're mowing grass, so.
Yes.
Like I don't expect them to have regular meetings all the time, you know, but other committees like Parks and Recs, I think we put in quarterly and stuff like that. So like as we're kind of, um, updating the project statements, uh, certain ones like the recycling and waste and conservation project statements I haven't done because there aren't, there's no one appointed to them, so I haven't done those yet. But generally, yeah, there's some language in those project statements to kind of help guide them as to what some of the expectations are.
I think that, do you think that that, um, committee handbook has been helpful so far?
I mean, people have complimented it, so I hope it's helpful.
Yeah.
It's a reference tool.
I thought it was a great idea, huh?
Yeah.
So can we?
Cause it's consistent.
Can we request, I don't hate to use the word require, can we request, I feel like maybe in the next month and a half or whatever, for each committee to, and we can stagger it to come in and give an update and if they can't be present, submit something written.
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna do is email it.
Cause like the Parks and Recs, we know about what they're coming up, but from their meetings, which is great, but not everybody like we know doesn't watch it. What is it, nine percent or something like that?
CPC has been routinely submitting stuff. Um, so I don't know if you have specifics you want me to reach out to. I can ask.
Also going to be nice because then if we're going to try to put together a newsletter, their reports would be helpful because then we can gather their reports and be like, oh, this is good information to, you know, to put out there. So I think that that.
Might spark interest in other people volunteering for different committees as well.
So can we request and, I don't know, pick a timeframe to have either written or if they wouldn't mind coming to a meeting to give an update on where they're at?
I think it should be required quarterly, even if they don't meet. Just say they're not working on anything, there's nothing going on, but so the chair spits out an email that said, we haven't, we're, we're taking a hiatus or we haven't met or whatever, it's, that's at least a report. It's not, nothing, it's, that's what we've been doing.
So then the only one is, um, someone for to take the IT committee to reach out?
I think that's four times a year. I don't think that's too much.
When is that? Next quarter would be, and does it start in July?
September.
September.
So it starts with fiscal year, yeah?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cause back to, I want to go back to the newsletter, but I would like to do a blurb of each one of the first start and then highlights after that.
Yeah, so if you want quarterly, it might be good to do it October, cause then they can review that quarter, that first quarter. Uh, was it July, August, September, right? That's how the budget committee did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do it the month after.
So October, okay. So how do we get that sent out to the?
Um, I mean, I'll email everyone. It, it's just, you know, if there's no response, then, then I think that's where you guys.
Do we issue a directive then that we want to hear from committees quarterly to know what's going on?
I mean, that's.
No response wouldn't need to be addressed for sure.
And then just sort of leave it up to them to follow through and if they have questions, they can reach out and.
Works for me. You got any input, anything to add to that, dude?
Uh, nope.
Anyone else?
Good.
Great.
All right.
So we have left, but we're not going to worry about the conservation and forestry because it's not.
Well, I'll take those if we need to, I mean.
So if somebody came, then you'd take that one and then IT committee, I mean, I guess I, I don't mind taking that one.
Sorry, I'm just looking somewhere else when he keeps saying that.
No, it's. Is Amber doing IT? Yeah, I'll do IT. I'll do cemetery, IT and recycle and waste if.
Doing.
And then, um, so would be.
I mean, I, I'm not, uh, there's already a liaison for the comprehensive plan, but I do attend them because they're pretty awesome, but, um, I don't know if you could throw me on there as well, so. As a listener.
So I'll reach out to cemetery and IT and just let them know that we discussed this tonight and we're gonna, we would like a quarterly report in October to put in our new. What are we gonna call then the newsletter?
You want to volunteer with me to come up with some ideas?
Maybe, uh, maybe we put out a poll question or.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
The, the public to have some input on what they would name it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that's, that is an awesome idea.
Make it a contest?
I love it. What would the winner be? Announced in the first newsletter.
Yeah, get their picture on the front. Like a newspaper.
I get a byline? Do I get a byline?
Um. Move along then. Carrie Jo, discussion regarding select board emails.
Um, so first of all, I just want to say this is not about any past email, context, person. This is just email responses in general. So our form of government is town manager and board. And the town manager, among your other hats, you're responsible for inquiries and complaints and concerns and all that. This static response is meant to reinforce that process. So I know I'm new, I've only seen a few emails, but I'm gonna safely assume that there are emails that come down that don't include the town manager, um, someone inside or outside the town, or all the board members. But even if it comes to us, we work on things that we liaise, like I do with the franchise agreement, um, or giving your personal opinion, but anything other than that goes through you. So that's why I was thinking having a sta- static response to reinforce that process. We received your email, thank, you know, thanks, it's important to us. All these emails are kept on record. Any concerns, questions, et cetera, will be handed by the town manager as you use your resources. Anything for the agenda, again, talk to the town manager. That, that was my point was to, like we do when people get up for a public comment section, we reinforce the charter. I think a static thing to reinforce a charter process, I thought it would be helpful. I didn't think it was changing a policy or process, I think it was just restating it. I just don't think the automated response will work. I don't know how to address that part of it, but.
Yeah, I personally, I can see the intent behind it. I do think it's gonna open up issues, whether it's liability issues or just complicated issues, because I think what, what may happen is, you know, we do handle complaints, we have a policy on handling complaints. Um, and so if someone goes through that procedure and they don't like the answer they get, so they decide to email the board and your automated response says, oh yeah, we're gonna handle, you know, so and so is gonna take care of your inquiry. Well, on our end, we've closed it out, we've had to close it out to say, we've done our due diligence. So it kind of reopens that if the auto response, it's, to me, it's like, it depends what you get for an email, how that auto response is going to be perceived.
Yeah, I know, it's not, it's hard to have it as a catch-all, but maybe if, no one's gonna e- email me randomly, just me, but let's just say an email comes to my email address. I would respond with that and CC everybody on that, but it would be her that addresses it. I'm trying to take us out of the loop because we don't belong in the loop, except for those other things we talked about or, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I wouldn't advise the board to do an auto response, but you can, if you feel like, you know, emails need a response, then, then you can respond to them, you know, thank you, I've received it, I'll forward to the town manager. Um, I don't feel like an auto response is necessary. I think it's gonna unintentionally like cause confusion or cause some issues.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Is it broken?
It doesn't have to be broken to try to improve it. I'm not saying that you have to go with it one way or another. I'm, I'm just not of the mindset of it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I kind of am in this case. I like it. I'm not, it's not a, um, it's not a criticism at all in your thought process or your writing about it or, or anything, um. I don't, I don't know if it's necessary to have automated response to it.
Yeah, we'll take the automated response out of it, but, uh, you know, I respect all of you guys and all our opinions matters and I'm glad to hear them. And thanks for letting me voice mine.
Mm-hmm.
No, I like that. I, I do like the idea behind it, but yeah, that's the.
Well, maybe further down the line, if, if it's needed, we'll talk again about it and I'll keep my white paper.
Anything else on that?
Well, there's only been, not everybody has responded.
No, I have no opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have anything you want to add, then?
Nothing that I haven't stated in public.
Okay.
I don't understand what that means. But, okay, if it's no input, it's no input, Joe.
Um, I think there's a mutual standing among the board members if any one constituent was to contact us with a question or a complaint, we refer to the town manager.
Right.
You know, forward it, forward the email.
Okay, thanks for listening.
Are we, uh, giving her recess?
Yep.
Yep.
Should we wait for her?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
I feel like we should put on some music, something like. We've got the elevator. Yes.
Well, we can read F, well.
Uh.
Mm-hmm.
What's coming next? Oh, hello. It's fine. We were waiting, we were waiting for you, so break time is over. We're moving on now to, uh, item F, new business appointments. Age-friendly ad hoc committee, two applicants. Do you think everybody knows that?
Yes.
Make the motion uh, to accept the recommendation of the town manager to consider, uh, an executive session to review expectations and committee roles prior to the appointment.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed because it's unanimous. Did that apply to both?
Yes.
Aye.
We're doing that now, cause?
I think so.
Doing what now? Sorry.
The executive session, is that what you were asking? Yeah, no, I think we would need to notify all everybody.
That's me and he's all.
I thought it was also an opportunity when she was going to switch to.
Well, and it would be individual, not so guys want to do them together, but yeah.
So we're moving along to the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed because it's unanimous. Warrant. Payroll warrant number six in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed because it's unanimous. Um, accounts payable warrant number sixty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Who moved it, sorry?
I did.
Okay, that's high five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Motion dairies?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Accounts payable warrant number seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
As a manager, um, the payment to Mr. Lowry, uh, he's performing, uh, I think on the twenty-first. He's supposed to perform, I think, last Thursday, but it got rained out. Is the policy that, uh, once they're on the schedule to perform the concert in the park, they get paid regardless of whether or not the, the performance is rendered.
I can ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's happened before, so it'd be worth asking.
Just.
Yeah, I don't want to recall anyone getting canceled, except for this one.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe he worked out a different date, I don't know.
Right, yeah, just like a rain check or something like that. I don't know what the policy is, because we haven't had a, uh, rain out before, but there are two payments here for two performances, so.
That was there too. I was sad when we saw that was canceled. That was gone. So all, then we, all those in favor, that was discussion. Aye.
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 And no one's opposed because that was unanimous. Sorry, I almost forgot where I was, just for a second. And so now it's time to sign. Sign the warrants. These are the minutes. I don't think of that one.
Can I have, um, I'll tell you.
Town line.
Say that again. Can I have your five Fs back, since you guys didn't vote on it? Oh, it's, it'll be in my packet. Oh, okay.
Let's put the town line.
Mm-hmm.
This is for Rest of Dreams. So now on that one. Leave those in there. The ones we're not.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. I'm gonna do the next one.
You okay? So.
Sorry, sorry, that's my bad. Sorry, sorry, that's my bad.
Uh, I guess we put there or there? Or next one?
Special amusement one only has three lines.
Yeah, I think that was made, the template for that was made probably when there was only three select board.
More likely.
I was, I saw that early, a little while.
So, that one's complete. This one looks like there's only three signatures, so I think it goes back to date.
Yep.
You can. You guys can move right on.
So, I'm trying to give you all my little batteries back because I think I've been stealing on the last couple of meetings. Those to somebody else's.
We're not signing anything for the, for the generator?
No.
Okay. Because we voted on that, I was just thinking about, uh, an extension and that's what that was, so. It's in my own mind, I just wanted to make sure that we covered it all. Okay, Joe? Carrie Jo?
All right, thanks.
One more alignment on this side.
Mm-hmm.
alignment and reasoning. I made the note on the back of this, the winner, even though there was only one.
That one's all set, but.
Trying to feel important.
Right, winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Oh, there's my pen.
That last one for Rustic Dreams, that, that's the amusement, special amusement. Just wanted to make sure I put those together, thank you. We got it, all covered.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That's it.
Sorry, is that, oh, yes, it's at the bottom. Yep, there you go, sorry about that.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. I'll bring back the other ones that I stole next time.
Not sure where it went.
It's money, right?
It has to be in here somewhere. I know I had it. There it is. There you go. I'm still unloading over here.